You get to be the big show tonight.[4.13][4.13](laughing) By the way, another Rotarian.
Get situated here. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council, City Staff. And before I start, I do want to add that Bruce, thank you for your tutelage as well as my boss. I have two bosses, the Sheriff and Chief Disessary and you. And I worked for you when I was a captain out here too. And I have to say, the history with the Sheriff's Office, Camrio PD, the city has always been very positive, great communication. Our staff meetings are very, how shall I put it, entertaining at times. Because we really, he's right, everybody works very hard. I'm extremely impressed with all the department heads I get to work with. And I've worked another couple of cities and it's not, it is truly a pleasure to have worked for you. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Monica.
Sure. And on that note, we're going to go over, as you've seen in the paper, we've, all the 10 cities in Ventura County get your annual UCR, the Uniform Crime Reporting Report come out. So what I thought I'd do is put a little PowerPoint together for you, and you have a copy with you, and we'll go over it. And as I go through it, I'll explain things. But certainly if you have a question, please don't hesitate to interrupt and I will see what I can do. So, first off, what is the UCR? UCR is Uniform Crime Reporting Statistics, and it provides a reliable set of crime stats for law enforcement, local government, public media, and educators for research and planning purposes. And the FBI puts out the UCR numbers. And with that said, they have, they do it, they compare calendar year to calendar year. So if you have a really good year in 2014 and your 2015 year is not as good, your stats are going to be reflected. So what I did too, I'm going to, basically your UCR numbers are your Part 1 and your Part 2. And most of the cities you've seen in the paper are the Part 1 crimes. I will have a section on Part 2s because that's more of the quality-of-life issue-type crimes, and we'll go over those issues as well. But the Part 1 crimes, as you see, are homicide, rape, robbery, assault, burglary, larceny, theft, motor theft vehicle, and arson. And like I said, they, the FBI puts these figures together and it's basically for everybody to analyze and see what you're doing and see how you can do better. So I wanted to give a little historical perspective, because I noticed when I was pulling up stats since 1991, actually, that all the cities in Ventura County have kind of gone on the same wave of crime, so to speak, and same plateaus and same peaks and valleys. So just to start off right now, 2015, which we just finished, crimes per 1,000 is 18.55. Where we had back in 2006, about nine years ago, it was 19.35. So it was definitely higher. But the highest reported level of crime was back in the 1990s, in 1991 with 32.44 per thousand. And everybody in the county was about that same. So when we, I'll have another slide to show you the kind of, the plateaus and the peaks and valleys. But when I was researching, I went, wow, that's amazing. And I was a new deputy out here at that time (laugh) and I thought, I didn't realize it was that high. But we have, we've progressed. And what else I want to do, I did some research and so did our Sheriff's Office on Prop 47, because that is an issue.
Explain Prop 47 to the general public.
Yeah. Prop 47, it was enacted in, a voter initiative enacted in November 2014. And basically what it did was, it reduced several felonies to misdemeanors. And those, the nonviolent felonies. And those include drug offenses, several misdemeanors, shoplifting, and it also made a grand theft $950 and greater. So petty theft is now $950 and below. So a lot of our crimes were reduced to misdemeanors. And with Prop 47, looking at our inmate population, the goal of Prop 47 was to reduce prison populations and jail populations. And talking with our Sheriff's Office and detention, our inmate population has not decreased. And we are still pre-Prop 47 population.
Still full.
Still full. So when we look at-
Is that because the state sent people back to us?
Pardon?
Is that because the state from their prisons sent people back to us?
Yes. AB 109, which was in 2011, we are now housing state prisoners for several years. So we just really don't have the room. So a lot of times when we arrest somebody even for a nonviolent felony, we'll get a court date, they get released, and they come back. So the time that people spending in jail is much shorter. So I went ahead and got some data from our jail too, and around the county. And the first full year of post-Prop 47 releases from the Sheriff's Office for Ventura County showed 793 of convicted offenders, Prop 47 offenders, have re-offended since their release from custody. And 87% of those have been arrested one to three times. So specifically Camrio, I want to see what Camrio is like. That's the county. We had 122 Prop 47 offenders. And looking at those stats, 87 or 67 have, 67% have not re-offended, and 40 or 33% have re-offended. And looking at those, what have they done? So I got the run of it. A lot of it is drug offenses, identity theft, property crimes, the nonviolent crimes that they're not going into jail and staying very long. So when they're re-offending, they're re-offending on things that they have gotten arrested before, have gotten a court date, and gotten out very quickly. And just anecdotally, I, you know, I talk to detectives all the time. I say, well, what are the, what are our suspects saying? Because they know the $950 limit, they know if they get right under that. And it's true, they do know that. They go, yeah, I'll just get a ticket and I can leave. So it's frustrating for all of us, but that's reality and that's what the voters pass, so we have to deal with it. And I have some slides on some cases of interest, but a couple in particular, we had some identity theft with mail theft, arrested them, good cases, and they got out the next day with a court date. And they re-offended. And they victimized again. So detectives were right back on it, got that person back in jail on new cases. So just to let you know, we're taking it very seriously. The volume of people coming out is quite large, so it does obviously keep us busy. So right now, we can, can I say definitively that Prop 47 has had an impact? I can, because we have people that are re-offending and the data shows it. Is it, is it making a difference in our crime stats? I'm not sure I can hang my hand on that, because if you look back in 2006, we were higher. So, and that's per capita. So we have to look at the whole picture, and that's why I brought that up, because I don't want to hang my hand on it totally, but I do believe it is a factor, especially given the re-offending. So for 2015, we had 14,573 calls for service, and we were down. It's, I was amazed, we were down by 1,136 calls. But we were up in arrests quite a bit. We had 2162 arrests, an increase of 93. And part of that too is, and we'll go to the next slide in a minute, some of our violent crimes were up, but that also made, we made more arrests, but that's also more time-consuming. So maybe a reduction in the calls could be because we were on a lot of other calls and spending more time. And those do take more time. But regardless, we are down on calls slightly, but we're up in arrests quite significantly. The reported Part 1 crimes, it's, like I said earlier, is an increase of 194 or 18%. However, if you look just two years prior, in 2013, we were at 1218 Part 1 crimes. It's only a difference of 28 crimes. So we're up 28 crimes since 2013. So 2013 was real similar numbers to now. But Prop 14, or Prop 47 went in 2014. So once again, it just kind of gives you an idea, we're not way off the chart in crime, but we're certainly, we're not, you know, we're really similar to 2013 in all the Part 1 and the Part 2s.
You see the same thing happening in other cities on the 47, Prop 47 crimes?
Yes. We saw, and I think it's on my next slide, every city except four in the, in the county have an increase in both property crime and violent crime. So I want, I don't want to speak for them, but just anecdotally, like we talked about, we, and talking to other chiefs, we do see an increase, and our suspects know what they can get away with, basically with a ticket versus going to jail. Oh yeah, all, in my note, all but four cities in Ventura County experienced an increase in Part 1, including our unincorporated areas too, which we haven't had an increase in that area in a long time. Also, when I was doing some research for this, California crime rates continue to drop, and then most importantly, in 2014, we were at historic lows. So once again, you compare 2015 to 2014, your percentage just naturally is going to go up because 2014 was so safe. So you have to kind of look at that percentage.
That was a historical low, right? Crime rate, very low.
Very low, yeah. And I'm your new chief, so it went up, so.[604.41][604.41](laughing) So this is the graph that's kind of interesting. The, the blue is the property crime, and I had it, I have it started from 1995. And if you see, we had some real big highs, and it's kind of plateauing and then goes back, and we're going to a little bit back up. The red is violent crime, and we've been, I think right now, we're at 1.68 per thousand. So we're kind of steady, we're starting to head up a little bit. There's been some peaks and valleys, like 2006, that we had some, a little bit of an increase in violence. But overall, and then when I compared this too to the other cities, all the other 10 cities, we're all in the same kind of pattern of increases and decreases. And it could be a variety of things. It could be AB 109, it could be obviously Prop 47, it could be recession-related. But we all have, I noticed, we're all, are very similar in our pattern of crime waves or crime sprees throughout the county.
Wow.
So for our, our violent crime, we went up to 113. That is the most since, obviously more than 2013 and 2014. And with the homicide, we had two, and obviously zero in 13 and 14. And the two, we have both, we have suspects on both, ones all have already been indicted. The other one is, is a sad note, that actually happened to a toddler in a child abuse case in 2014, but the toddler died in 2015. So thus the stat goes to 2015. Our rapes, we have the expanded definition, and I don't want to go too graphically in it, but the old definition of rape was just rape of a female, and it was just rape. Now it includes all the sexual assault crimes that are felonies, and it does include men as victims. So the, the numbers have increased quite a bit, because rape is more inclusive now than it used to be, and that changed in 2013.
So it was more, it was more significantly raped than it is today, including lighter versions? I hate to try to explain it.
Well, it includes, it includes, sodomy includes, oral copulation includes, everything that did not, didn't used to be included in the rape category. Now, if we go to the, the old version, we would have had four. So that's, that's, that, once again, it ups your violent crime. Yeah, four. And I can say on all of our rape classifications too, and don't think that there's actually 16 individual rapes, one case can have three or four different crimes attached to it. So all of, I, all of our quote rape categories, we have suspects in all of them, actually one of them is an unfounded case, six arrests have been made, and we have leads on three others, they're under investigation. So we have identified the offenders in all of those. On the robbery, we took a big spike in robbery too, and that we have had 22 arrests. Robbery, we've had success in solving those crimes because of, actually witnesses that come forward, video surveillance tape. We also had a spree of robberies that came up from the Valley area in LA, we made good arrests on. So yes, it looks bad, but a lot of those, I can tell you for a fact, have been out-of-town people. We also had some street robberies going on, low-level robberies, cell phones being taken, purses, kind of odd things that kind of spiked us in 2015. And one, actually one of them was reclassified to no crime, it was a false report. But of the 17 street robberies of that 30, we have 10 arrests out of that. So majority of our, our violent crimes, we do have arrests to back them up. On the assaults, the aggravated, you'll see a big jump. And on those, that is a big indicator unfortunately with domestic violence. And I'll have a slide going over our actual DV cases. So aggravated assaults, we had a jump, also because our robberies were up. Robberies usually include an aggravated assault, because you're using a gun or a knife or some type of force. So you get, it's almost like a double tag for a stat. So it's a little deceiving, but it's not. So you've got 65 aggravated assaults, but a lot of those are from the robberies that were happening, and domestics.
So one person may be charged with both robbery and aggravated assault, and it's in this list?
Mm-hmm.
So that really is the same person doing two crimes?
Right. And it's, it's the charge. We're looking at the charge, not necessarily at an individual. So, and the same thing with the sex crimes too, because I used to work sex crimes. One, one incident could have four or five different charges to it, and yet, so you get the stat for it.
So that, one person's having two or three stats up here, making that go up?
Exactly.
Statistically, it's not as bad as it looks?
Right. And I don't want to-
It's one person.
Yeah. And that's what's tough, so that's why we have to really drill down as, as police officers and say, okay, where are the trends? And what, and what are we doing about them? And part of those aggravated assaults too, we had five bar fights, and you know, the threats we've had at the schools lately with the bomb threats, that's all aggravated. So that all counts. So. So there you go. So we have our toll of 113, which is definitely a spike, but in looking at the other cities, they're unfortunately feeling the same pain we are with violent crime and property. So the next slide I'll go to is our property crime.
Let me ask you a question, real quick. If this person, as I said, did three of those, that would affect those stats, a lot of times he'll plead guilty to one or two.
Right.
And so those go away. So statistically, this is kind of misleading in a lot of ways, because there's just, fewer people might, doing all those crimes.
Well, it's, it's a matter of arrest and documentation. We do, if we have to reclassify a crime, like on the robberies, like I said, one of them was truly an unfounded case, we do reclassify that. It might take a while to get to the FBI reporting to get that back, because when we pull up stats for the entire period, say a 10-year period, those are all the modified crime index. So as things get reclassified, you need to change those numbers. So on the, on the property crimes, I-
Excuse me, I've got a question. And it's one that I've wondered about a lot. I don't know whether it's in here now or not, but I recall that we always reported the crimes, but we never really recorded the arrest, the result from those, from our, from the police work that's done. Is that recorded anyplace about the number of people arrested for various felonies or?
Yeah. I have a slide on what detectives have done and how many arrests they've done with the cases.
Okay. Good. Glad to hear that.
So on the, the property crimes, you'll see an uptick, but I put, once again, 2013, 2014, 2015. If you look, rate per thousand total property, we're not far off from 2013. So 18.34 in 2013, and then 18.55 property crimes in 2015. The big spikes for the property crime was residential burglaries. 94, I'm sorry, 29 of the burglaries occurred from garage doors being left open or unlocked, or side doors not being secured properly. Two of them were actually fumigation type of burglaries, where they got through the tents. 11 burglaries, and this is with the crew, we worked with Thousand Oaks, 11 burglaries by a known crew from LA came up and did quite a crime spree, and we made over 11 arrests on that one. And also, five burglaries from Leisure Village, when we had a security guard stealing medications out of some of the homes, and we arrested him.
So he got, he had, he had five of those crimes?
Mm-hmm.
And so that's, that total has five crimes for one guy?
Exactly. Well, same thing with the 11 burglaries by a known crew. They probably most likely did more, we can't quite tie them to everything, but their MO is the same. Some cases, we closed by MO, but it does, we were hit hard, we worked hard with Thousand Oaks, Moore Park, and LA Sheriff to, to get those crime rings coming. And there were the daytime burglaries, the door knocks and whatnot, so. That was, it, we worked really well together, got a lot of people in custody, but our, our stats went up quite a bit. The other area, the burglary other, which is commercial, we had a big spike at the Outlet Mall from January to March of rental car vehicles being targeted. And we had over 36 vehicle burglaries just in a short amount of time, the rental cars being targeted, like I said. We did, we thought we found a suspect, and once we targeted that suspect, he left the area and has not come back. And all of a sudden, our burglaries stopped. So pretty much thought it was him, but we're, we still have those closures, those cases. Some of the, also, the business burglaries, we had some restaurants being broken into via the roof access, and cash registers being stolen and cash out of the, out of the stores. And we, and every time we have, especially like a commercial burglary, even a residential, we try to get a crime prevention officer out there, or at least call them to say, this is how you can better secure your, your belongings, your goods, et cetera. So that, that's always been our, our goal, and we really strive for that. Also on our, our grand theft and our petty theft, on the grand theft, we had a rash of third-row seat Tahoe, third-row seats stolen from Tahoe vehicles. It was in Thousand Oaks, it was in our city, Ventura had it, and there is a market for it, believe it or not, and you found them on Craigslist, we have a lead on that. But it's, it's unbelievable what, what they can do. Cadillac converters too, were being stolen right in parking lots.
Cadillac converters?
Because they're used, they can resell them or they can recycle them. So we, we're combating a lot, we're, we're working well together with our, our neighbor agencies to get crooks, you know, behind bars, hopefully, but it's, it's definitely a struggle. You'll see, we had a spike also in arsons, and that was related to our dentist that was arrested on the three or four arsons.
He had three or four arsons out of all this, one guy, okay.
Yeah. And then at the latter part of the year, we had a Mission Oaks, the spree of arsons, two guys, and they ended up taping themselves.
Oh, geez.
So we got good evidence on them.[1258.04][1258.04](laughing)
That's the dumb-
Exactly.
And then they posted it?
Well, not, not necessarily. We had means to find it through some other sources, and we found them, we arrested them, and they were, they were connected to several though. So the big spike on the arsons was the two, and they were from Camrio, basically making some fires in the Cuyges Creek area, in the, in the industrial area, and then, and then videotaping themselves, a very bright-
Monica, if I could cut in, I guess it's the engineer in me. So there's three years here, and I just want to state the obvious for, for someone at home that's, that's seen this for the first time, because we've seen these many times. Sometimes with statistics, we're our own worst enemy. If you look in the middle column and know that that's a low, it's an anomaly, it's a low year, none of the crime is good obviously, but it's a low year. So when we compare 14 and 15, it looks like we went up and, and something, possibly the perception could be that something's wrong. But we hit a low, and the only place sometimes from a low is, is to go up. And if you compare, you know, 13 and 15 to the, to the low year, you know, if you throw out the low, it looks like, you know, we pretty much were steady for the last couple of years. And I just wanted to point that out. It's not that crime is running rampant and so on, and Monica's, I know, conveying that message, but it's, it's just something to look at, that we, we're at a low, which is great, and sometimes the only place is up, and it's just a normal cycle of how things work.
Or you get a new police chief and-
Well, that's the next, yeah, that's the next comment. Thank you.
The other area of concern is domestic violence. And you've seen this nationwide on the, you know, basically publicizing domestic violence is an issue, we need to deal with it. And a lot of our, like I said, 50% of our aggravated assaults were domestic violence-related. I just put up some stats here, and just to let you know, a domestic violence call for service is one of the most dangerous and deadly an officer can go on. We always send two officers to a DV call, always. So it ties people up. But the other thing too, with the crime at the DA's office, everything has to be recorded, because unfortunately with DV cases, our victims tend to recant. And unfortunately, that's, it's more common than not. So knowing that, knowing the time constraints, we did go up overall by 6% in DV cases. And the aggravated, when I was counting those up and looking at them, that, that's disturbing, because those aggravated mean that it might be a pre-homicide type of issue. So we need to make sure those victims get the help they need and services, so we don't have to, to go to that extreme. But I, I was just actually yesterday, met, and we just started a Domestic Violence Countywide Task Force. I am on it along with the DA and two other police department representatives, along with Children Family Services, Interface. So we're getting together, and we're seeing alarming numbers. And we think on our end, there's maybe something we can do to prevent having to take somebody away in handcuffs or body bags, because I've done both, and it's the most horrific case, one of the most horrific cases you can go to, calls you can go to. So we're, we're, we know we have a problem, and it's not just in this county, it's statewide, it's nationwide. So just to let you know, that's a, that's a very time-consuming call, it's a very important call that we get, we get the victim, their services they need, and if there's children in that house, they are victims too. So we need to make sure they get the help they need. So just wanted to point that out, that, that does, that is a factor in, especially our calls for service. Part 2 crimes, I'll go over briefly, and those are the more quality-of-life issue-type things. The, most of them, and unfortunately, I have it up here again, the misdemeanor assaults are DV-related, domestic violence. So unfortunately, we're seeing a spike in that. Also misdemeanor and felony vandalisms. A lot of the tagging has been done by slap tags and also some other spray tip type of graffiti-type tools that they use. Much more hard to apprehend and detect, but we've done, we've made several arrests, but that's another issue. The other, the other big area I want to hit on is identity theft and fraud. When I looked at, on this, especially on Part 2s, what was our biggest spike? We had 186 cases of reported fraud, an increase of 57 from 2014. And that correlates definitely to, we had a couple of mail theft sprees. And not just in our city, but in Thousand Oaks, Ojai had it, Ventura. And, and I'll, I'll have a couple pictures you'll find interesting, but the amount of mail that's stolen, and quickly, identities are stolen, and credit cards are forged, et cetera, and, and all kinds of things are, are gotten. You just, we have to be more safe with our identity, especially when it comes to our finances.
Monica, how, knowing that mail theft is a postal inspector case, because I worked that, they're federal, it's a federal case.
Right.
How, how well do you work with the local postal inspectors?
Very close.
And so they really pursue these, it should become a federal case?
Yes. We pursue it as far as we can. Because we, like I said, they, unfortunately, this is rampant, and this is the way people steal checks, credit card applications, et cetera. So it's very important that we work cohesively with postal office. And Mr. Little, you were talking about, what are we making arrests? So I put up some detective statistics from 2015. Detectives reviewed a total of 1,244 cases, that includes both misdemeanors and felonies. 626 required follow-up, which means interviews need to be done, DNA evidence, different types of evidence, follow-up, et cetera. They closed, detectives closed 765 of those cases, and out of those, 765, 317 were closed by arrest. So that was over a third. And detectives alone were responsible for 152 arrests. So sometimes when we get cases that are felonies and detectives handle, patrol will make the arrests for them, because they're out there, but detectives were also responsible for quite a few. The other big area too, is the amount of property we're able to recover from those arrests, and it's over, it's about a half a million, 510,000 were stolen property. iPads, TVs, jewelry, those are the big top items. And out of those, 1,244, 58 cases were sent to other units, agencies, meaning we have major crimes. So some of our cases, they go to a higher level and they handle for us, or they go to an actual, we take, we find a crime and we have another agency that has jurisdiction, or we work with them on the case. And that's happened with us with LA quite a bit. And then just on the felony cases, 746, 292 of those were closed by arrests, which is a very high number of arrests for that many felony cases. And I have to say, you know, when I, I, I say it all the time, we get a lot of good leads from just people calling in, saying, this person, I think, matches your video, or this is, we saw the robbery that way. So we really rely on information coming through, either through Crime Stoppers, from people just calling in, and from also surveillance video around the city and at homes too. That's very crucial into closing with arrest. Our special enforcement detail, SED we call it, they, even though they have down a little bit on their arrest total, if you look, they, they helped out with one, the one murder case, and then three attempted murders, which were stabbing, so we had. Those are very time-consuming, and they made arrests behind them, which was huge. Also, the, the drug offenses went up quite a bit. So they're very busy, and they're also busy on checking people that are on parole and probation violations, 154 versus 15. So part of our goal and, and strategy is looking at our more prolific offenders and giving them more attention, and making sure they are in compliance, because it's very, it's very crucial.
Monica, when you talk about probation, parole and probation, you're usually working with the parole officers or probation officers who go to arrest their offenders for whatever it is they're violating. So that stat right there could be a lot of, a lot to do with not just another crime, but violation of probation or prob, through other means.
Sure, sure. And a lot of them, fresh charges are added.
Right.
Yeah. But that, that's true. I wanted to go over a little bit of our gang activity, because actually, we haven't fortunately seen, I was asking our gang guys, what's the deal? And, and as you know, we have the two documented verified gangs, Berry Street and NSK Non-Stop Crew. Most of the arrests of our gang members have been involved with- Most of the arrests of our gang members have been involved with narcotics and controlled substances. And then a percentage of them have been incarcerated for a long time, in 2014, for some various offenses, and they have not gotten out. One of them was just involved in a stabbing on, end of, yeah, December of 2014. They were gang members, but it wasn't over a gang issue that the stabbing occurred, if that makes sense. But that person now is going to join his brother in incarceration, because they're both wanted for, or in for attempted murder and murder. So it's very, very serious charges. But as far as our gang activity, it's been mostly the sale and possession and use of controlled substances has been the key.
So a lot of our gang members are in custody?
Mm-hmm, that's correct. And it's because of the violent crimes. Then I decided to go into our narcotic arrests for both 2014 and 2015, and we just broke it down by month, to give you an idea. And I don't know why it sparked, spiked in March, but it's not March Madness, but I don't know why it did, but it did. And I could tell you, on the bottom, where it says the type of drugs that we're looking at, methamphetamine is still the number one, number one by over 50%, and then marijuana and heroin. Heroin's making a comeback, because oxycodone, oxycontin, people get hooked on those from injuries. And then we're finding now, and I just talked to our narcotics expert last week, he said, well, heroin's cheaper. So they're going to that, and they're smoking it, they're not injecting it.
Not methamphetamines? They're usually the cheaper.
Well, they could be, but the opiates are, that's a painkiller. So that's a different crowd that's using the heroin opiates. Meth is a different crowd. But meth is still our banner, unfortunately, our highest-used drug. Real quickly with traffic. If you notice, we have quite a few more stats in 2015. That's because we have a full complement of our cadet, parking cadets now. But we also, if you look at, and there's always been the adage, if you write more tickets, your injury collision should go down. Well, we wrote more tickets, and our injury collisions did go down by quite a few. Whether that's really true, I don't know, but we're going that way. And we're looking at our top 10 locations in the city. I put down some locations I know, and they're historical, they're the ones, they're the busiest ones, and those are the ones with the most red dots on our traffic map as to where we have our most, most of our collisions. And a lot of them is failure to yield type of violations or running red lights. And that used to be, that's normally the adage. But our traffic guys try to work those areas even more with their LiDAR radar techniques, if we can, you know, make a presence. The key is to get your injury collisions down, and we have done that at least in 2015. And we had, I believe, two fatalities, let me make sure, one fatality in 2014 and two in 2015. And unfortunately, the one in 2015 was DUI-related. It was the gentleman that was hit on Pandrosa Mobile.
Monica, I have a question.
Yes.
What's the stored vehicles? What is that?
Stored vehicles, those are vehicles that are stored for a variety of reasons. They have no license, they have no registration, that kind of thing. They can't be driven. They're inoperable, and they've been left illegally parked. On a positive note, we, our community resource unit is just gangbusters with all kinds of good things, and you're already aware of this, but I just wanted to add it to it, all the good things we have. Obviously, you saw our citizen patrol tonight, our police explorers and DART members, et cetera. We still do that. We're always increasing our neighborhood watch, we're up to 46. And our business watch, we're really pushing that even more. Classes for seniors, as you saw a couple of weeks ago, Be the DD and Project Safer, Vacation House checks, Project Hope, of course, with our homeless. The other big thing too, and I know Ms. Craven said this a couple of weeks about, about the prescription drug collection, we're pretty high in that. And we make an effort to actually go out to Leisure Village, I believe, twice a year to go out there to collect it, so they don't have to come in. So those are really good things. And we just started our student citizen academy, and it's in their third class. I saw them today. Really good group of kids, very excited about learning about law enforcement and community service. It's not just law enforcement, it's community service. So what are we going to do to prevent crime? I put some strategies up, and the big one on the top is our monthly crime control meetings. We've been doing that for years, but even more so with other agencies, and really getting down to where do we need to concentrate, where do we need to put more, you know, cops on the dots and do more predictive type of enforcement, which we're working on with crime analysis. The other big thing we did is concentrate, like I said, on our prolific offenders, making sure they stay in line, because as you've seen with Prop 47, they keep reoffending. So we have to be on our toes to make sure they are being, are there in compliance.
That may lead you to more arrests too, that go onto the-
Yes.
That's go up, but you're preventing, you're preventing crime.
No, I have to say, the guys and ladies that work out on the street, they're hustling, and they love what they do, but it's tough out there, and I commend them as much as I can. But we're doing the best we can, and, you know, especially with, talking to our crime prevention unit and social media, getting more information out. Lock your cars. In fact, I didn't mention it, on some of our thefts from vehicles, about 50% of those are all unlocked. So we, our stats would have been real low if we had more secured cars, but that's the way it goes.
How many purses were stolen, because people left them in there?
Quite a few.
That's exactly. They're warned about that, and every city gets warned about that. Don't leave your purse, or wallet, or whatever, it can be seen. It's a temptation.
And I talked to one lady, and she said, oh, I just don't want my window debris broken, and they can go ahead and steal it. And I thought, oh, dear God.
Oh, God.
So, yeah. And like I said earlier, I'm, we just started on a task force for domestic violence. We're real excited about that task force, hopefully make some headway in that arena, and get some more public awareness about DV and the effects, how it affects the entire family. What I decided to do, a few cases of interest, like I said, the guys are really doing a great job. This is an identity theft drug arrest. This traffic stop was made on Pickwick and Arneal at noon on a weekday, I think it was a Tuesday. And traffic stopped for false tabs. Deputies went further, he's on probation. All of a sudden, they find all these stolen mail, stolen checks. If you see on the bottom left, it's a big thing accused.
Yeah. So now you picked up about five or six crimes. Sounds like a whole bunch, and it's one guy.
Yeah, this was, this turned out to be over 100 victims.
Wow, wow.
So, great arrest. And this gentleman, the suspect, I should say, he was the one traveling from Indio and decided to stop in our city at Carl's Jr., 11:30 at night, and committed a stabbing on the passenger in his car. And he fled the area. We were on it right away. Detectives came out and worked with Long Poop PD and did a great job apprehending him, and so he's in custody, waiting trial for attempted murder.
He's definitely a gang member. You can see the stuff on the side of his eye?
Oh, yeah, definitely. And he's, he's a meth user too.
Yep.
There was dope in the car.
Much more crimes than one guy.
This was a drug-dealing arrest, and this was, actually, we got notified that there's some weed being dealt in, on the streets in the middle of the day, not only to adults, but to minors. Search warrants, five pounds of marijuana, $18,000 in cash. And that particular person got a year in jail and three years probation. And I think this is the last, no. We had the Pizza Hut robbery that happened at 10:00 in the morning, and I know we had immediate release on it. That was just good ops by our patrol sergeant. He said, this doesn't look right, and he was right in the right place at the right time. Got the information from the person that got robbed at gunpoint. We located him, we located the car, we located the stolen money, we located the gun. So that's a good case, that's still in court now. And this simple traffic enforcement stop for a cellphone violation. Guy talking on a phone, make a stop. He's UI, we pull him out, we evaluate him, he's definitely UI, he's got, he admits to drugs in his glove box. Turns out, he has a pound of methamphetamine hidden in a compartment. Our narcotics units responded, and he's into sales, so he's definitely, you know, that's he's dealing. And with that, I'm looking forward to a much safer 2016. And like I said, we do work really well together with our allied agencies, we have to. And in order to catch our crooks, because our suspects don't know, they go all over. So we have to be even more on our toes than ever to get ahead of the game. And obviously, our other focus too is domestic violence. We need to start getting the stats to go down, and making sure our families and the kids are safe. So on that note, that will conclude our crime presentation.
Question? Questions? Kevin?
Just to comment, Monica, I'd like to thank you for the very thoroughness of the report. It's one of the most thorough ones that I've been privy to. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
One other question. When, you had an arrest the other day of the father's son, under the influence, burglaries, home burglaries, burglaries. Were they Camarillo people?
Yes.
And how many, how many crimes, that's added up, did they do?
Well, actually, we got them for prowling. We did find some stolen property near them, couldn't connect it to them, but that case is still ongoing, but they're both heroin users. It's a father and son.
Father and son.
In the east end of the city. Yeah.
You'll let your in, kid. Yes.
I too would like to say, this is the most thorough report I've ever seen.
Oh, thank you.
And so thank you very much. You explained a lot of stuff that, I guess maybe there were questions in the back of my mind, but they hadn't been brought forward enough to ask. And so thank you for that. And thank you for everybody in your department who does all of the hard work that makes this kind of result.
Thank you. And as you know, we suffered some tragedies in the last couple of years, and then just seeing the, our agency really pull together with the city, the teamwork is what is the key. So we do appreciate that.
Just two little questions. One is, what percentage do you, can you guesstimate, I know you don't know it perfectly, but from people that are outside our city, making these, doing these crimes?
This is a guess. I'd say a good, a good 40% at least, maybe even 50. And Camarillo's a beautiful city, and it's affluent, and it's right off the freeway. Same with Thousand Oaks. And we tend to have, we tend, unfortunately, share suspects. So we work very closely with Thousand Oaks and Moore Park. In fact, we worked on, and Dave Klotzel's case with the stolen breaker, circuit breaker, sorry. And we found a lead on it, parolee, had electrical background, and guess what? We connected a lot of cases, so.